Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are y'all doing? Okay, we'll go ahead and call it to order. Uh, well, prior to calling it to order, those that would like to join me for a moment of prayer, please do so. To gracious and heavenly father, as we continue to reach outside of our norm and conduct the business of Stokes County Schools and always keep in mind that we are doing our best for the children and the community for which we serve. We ask for your strength, your guidance, your wisdom for those in need. We ask your compassion and your grace. For which in name we pray amen. Alright, so I'll call it out order. Dr. Rice, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great, thanks. Do we have any additions or amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Rogers, I would like to make a discussion out of my eye of high school graduations.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Could we also get a COVID update? Uh, discussion J. Some of the items might be discussed within the other items today, but if not, add that on there.
J is COVID. Okay. Anything farther? Alright, with that being said, do I have a motion to approve the agendas presented? Or as amended, rather?
I make motion to approve the agenda as amended with discussion items A and J.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Messick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Discussion of superintendent's budget. Dr. Rice, I'll let you go ahead since it's your budget.
Well, again, as we mentioned last month, uh, and as in your materials, those are, we'll start off with capital, that those are the items that we have pared down from the administrator's list, uh, and maintenance list. It'd be thirteen items that our recommendation to you, uh, would be. This is the one I turn it over to you and the board and let y'all discuss which one of those items you may want to revise or amend so that it is your budget recommendation going up the hill.
Okay. Uh, I'm, I'm called in. I'm gonna be traveling today. So Ms. Knight, are you on? Do you all see her?
I don't see her, but there's a couple phone numbers I don't recognize.
Okay. Ms. Knight going once? Twice?
She's emailed me and said she didn't get the link, so I sent her the link. So I'm sending her the number now. So, um, I'm, I'm rescinding.
Alright. That's two in a row, two weeks in a row.
Mister, uh, uh,
It's Mike.
Identify ninety-two and oh-one. The numbers.
I believe oh-one is Mr. Johnson. Thirty is Mr. Rogers. Ninety-two is Ms. Tetter. And I don't know the oh-four and the oh-nine. Oh-four.
Michael Sands.
Sands. Uh, that he is calling in for better audio quality.
Who is?
Michael Sands. He is on video, but he has called in for better in case he needs to speak. His computer had a little glitch in it.
Okay.
Who's oh-nine?
I'm here, it's me.
Okay. Alright, we're going over the capital, uh, budget. You're up. Comments or statements?
Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I wasn't sure that you could hear me, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, it's at you now for capital, uh, super nuns capital budget request for your input.
I mean, I think everything looks good. Um, I understand like we discussed last time, the potential for having to, you know, possibly do this with less, but hopefully not. Um, no really further comments or concerns. I know, um, I mean, that's all for capital budget. Thank you.
Alright, Ms., uh, Messick?
Um, well, they look like needs that we have to, uh, address, so, uh, I'm, I'm fine with it at this time.
Ms. Tetter?
I have some questions throughout the this.
Okay.
Rick, is Ricky on?
He is.
Okay, um, when we, you get to the other requested projects list, but for Mount Olive, it says lighting and ceiling tile project. I just wanna make sure that we took care of the lighting project that Mount Olive had from last year's budget from the replacement. Did all that get taken care of?
We haven't bid that out with the architect yet. Uh, we had the pre-bid for King Elementary last Friday for the doors. And then we're hoping before the end of May is to bid out the lighting project, uh, for Mount Olive.
And is that just half of the school? Or is that the entire school? Cause at one point, I know we talked about just doing half. But would that be complete then? Or is this, um, under other requested projects, the other half?
Well, originally this was just half the money that we budgeted, but the architect feels that we can do it a different way than what I had in mind. And we're hoping it's gonna come in with the money that we have now.
From this current year budget?
Yes, ma'am, correct.
And that would replace all of those ones that don't have covers and the broken ones and all that?
That, that's correct.
Okay, um, next question regarding Nancy Reynolds and their, um, other requested projects. Couldn't they go to the, um, endowment about the awning? Since that is an exterior and we don't always take care of awning projects?
That, that would be up to their endowment committee to request that. Uh, but in the past, they have always felt like if we have paid for projects at other schools, they felt like Nancy Reynolds would be entitled to the same project.
I know, but it took forever for us to, um, for other awning projects. And I'm just wondering if that we probably will be able to do those. Maybe they could go to the endowment this time for that request.
That would be an option for the endowment to look into, and I'll pass that on to Ms. Rose.
Okay, um, could you tell us what the bid for the South Stokes track? Could you remind us what that six hundred thousand dollars includes? Um,
The six hundred thousand dollars, five hundred thousand would be to replace the track. The under, the other hundred thousand, it would be to remove the trees and replace the fence along the, uh, between, uh, along the Vista side.
Okay, and but last year when we asked for all the schools for the tracks, the estimated cost, and I know we'll go over this with the West Oaks project session, but that was at a hundred and seventy-five?
That's correct. Once we got the engineer involved and realized everything that we had to do, it was more instinct, well, the work turned out to be more extensive than what we budgeted.
That's a lot more.
A lot, correct.
Uh, can you tell me, did, did, um, we had discussions about this a few months ago regarding King and Pine Hall, painting on some common areas? And we, when we left that as getting that done possibly during spring break and then all this COVID stuff happened. So I was just wanting to circle back to that and see if any of that
That has not been done. The project at Pine Hall came in almost double over budgeted what the same contractor quoted it for last year. Um, King was in line of the money that we had, but I just put everything on hold because we didn't, you know, for people coming in our building and things like that. Um, I was hoping maybe if we could have, we've done some things in-house, for example, like Mount Olive on the skylights. Uh, we didn't contract out the lighting, uh, nor the painting there. We did that in-house. And saved like thirteen thousand dollars.
At what school?
Mount Olive.
So we can do, we, in, we can do painting?
I have one guy that can do, I have one guy that can do painting. Small projects like Mount Olive, he could, he could done by himself, but, uh, it just took him longer to do it. But Pine Hall and the King would be more than one, one person could do.
And could we do a combination of our person and, um, whoever you're in discussions with doing the contract work?
I could look into that, but typically the contractors don't work same hours as we do.
Well, maybe with the change in times here, um, no students in the building, maybe we could, um, adjust our in-house person's time or something to accommodate that and get some projects done. Just thinking, trying to think outside the box to get
I understand.
Okay, that's all I had on, on capital right now.
Okay. Now time to the, I guess now's my time. Uh, the first thing I, I would personally like to see is before we put anything on the list, we need to move the safety items to the safety and emergency needs to go to the top. Uh, I don't know how the board feels about that, but if we go in and, and you know, why, we're putting efficiency or maintain floors above safety, that looks bad. Uh, second off, in this growing climate with the funds we have resourced, the fact we have projects that are double and triple what we, what we have requested. I don't think this is the year that South Stokes, uh, we put in for their track, not knowing how much West Oaks, if it's even gonna get done. Uh, I've talked to several of the commissioners and the budget is not gonna be the traditional budget. It's gonna be a lot bleaker. Every department has requested that we, that they be cut other than schools. So us going in thinking we're gonna get traditional dollars is pretty much non-efficient, uh, nonexistent. I feel like, could be wrong, hope I am. Uh, I think we have a pretty good relationship with county commissioners now, so if it becomes a critical, we can. But like I said, I would like to move anything with safety. Uh, bump ten, eleven and twelve to three, four and five, just slide everything else back. And then, uh, part, put the roofs at the bottom under, you know, move the roofs down to the bottom under their order of importance. So in talking to Ricky on Friday, Lawsonville, that's a gotta have. Nancy Reynolds is a wanna have or need to have, but not a gotta have. Uh, and then the other roof. Uh, okay. Yeah, I guess that's the only other roof. So that's my input. So we'll, in order for expediency, so we don't have to discuss this again under action, we're running around this night. What are your thoughts on those movements?
I think that sounds reasonable. I'm, I'm okay with your suggestion, Mr. Rogers.
Okay, Ms. Tetter, I mean, uh, Ms. Messick?
Um, yes, I agree with you about, um, putting the order, uh, for the roofs and, uh, moving them, like you said. I also wanted to ask Ricky this. Ricky, have y'all not been doing any renovations since the COVID nineteen crisis? You haven't done any renovations in the schools?
We have done minimal renovations, uh, because the maintenance staff is, we're working at half-staff. We have like a A-team, B-team, half-staffs working, the other halves off.
Well, I just noticed that a lot of businesses, um, you know, are taking this time when they don't have clients and stuff to renovate uh, their businesses. And, um, so I was just assuming that a lot of this, um, critical needs that we needed to get done would be, you know, we had worked on during this time.
Well, we're still continuing to get work orders in. My staff is still out, you know, doing their job, but they're doing work orders. And we, like I said, we have done some renovations, like Mount Olive, uh, we had our staff to do that. Um, and, uh, but the majority of what they have been working on has been work orders, cause we're still continuing to get those in.
From principals, work orders that need to be done from principals for their different individual schools.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Ms. Tetter?
Uh, I agree with moving those safety items up. But could we maybe put, uh, keep? So it'd be, one would be emergency, two fall protection. Can three be the London fire alarm? And then, and then we go to four, South Stokes Gym, King Elementary?
Yeah, I mean, we can slide everything safety related to number three in that order. Just everything that safety goes to the top of the list, everything else goes down accordingly. Not, yeah, out of order, just slid down.
But we're scratching number thirteen?
And putting thirteen as a future request, future necessity. So that they see it on the horizon.
Okay. But we're still
Future necessity due to, yeah, future necessity due to, due to safety. And my personal feelings are in times like this, I mean, good Lord, West went without a track for three years. If, if we can, can, if we can get West Oaks track completed, then, uh, worst case, South can run their meets at West if it becomes an unsafe condition beyond, uh, what it is now.
You mean West
Until
South?
No, I mean, South can run them at West if we can get West's track redone.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
No, it's not, it, it's not a, uh, it's not something we wanna do. It may be something we have to do until the country gets back on its feet again.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly.
Right. Uh, but the chillers at West are still on this list.
Yeah, chillers, chillers go up to right below safety. It would be right underneath, uh, and on the roof projects, that was the other one, the North Stokes. Uh, I would like them ranked as in order of can it be patched for one year or not? And Ricky, that's something you can present to us. You know, prioritize roofs one, two and three, cause that's a hundred and ninety thousand dollar roof. If it can be patched one more year, hopefully we'll get it, but I don't know.
Yeah, Mike, we can wait on North Stokes', uh, roof another year. Like we talked about last week, Lawsonville definitely needs a roof. Nancy Reynolds can be patched for another year, and we could put North Stokes off for another year as well.
Okay, with that being said, we can put roof leak, cause I mean, at North Stokes roof, you've got it for safety, and at Nancy Reynolds, you got roof leaks. So can we put North Stokes at roof leaks, leave it at number twelve and put Nancy Reynolds? Or which one's worse, Nancy Reynolds or North Stokes? Which one's gonna affect more people?
North Stokes would affect more people, but Nancy Reynolds is worse than North Stokes. I would rank them Lawsonville, Nancy Reynolds and North Stokes in priority order. And North Stokes can definitely wait another year.
Okay, then we'll just move, change that from, uh, let's say Nancy Reynolds, leave it at roof leaks and change North Stokes roof to, to roof leak. And it stays at number twelve then. And the South Stokes track drops off. So it puts a one point five million and some change. Five-two-four with a highlighted budget, you know, future safety on North, on South Stokes track. Okay, so with that being said, we will move on to current expense budget.
And Ms. Moore, if you'd like to, again, this, we presented that at the last month's meeting. If you have any questions, we're happy to go through it, but this is your opportunity.
Ms. Knight? Now's your floor with Ms. Moore. Say hello to that.
Hey there. What I, uh, the changes that I made for current expense was the fact that the three and, three and a half guidance positions, uh, were requested to be added in to have full coverage. We changed the accreditation dues. And we also went back on the first responder after talking with Mr. Rose. He said there would be no way that could get started for the entire year. So I have changed that back to fifty percent. So, and what I've done on changes, I put everything that I changed in green for you to kind of, as you go through the individual sheets, you can see, and actually put their amount in red where you can see the addition. But if you will go where it is in this packet, go to page seventeen, which is at the very end of the current expense. And then behind page seventeen is kind of the summary. And with those changes and additions, it would mean we're increasing our budget by a million three hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So down at the bottom of that page, I've gone again and shown you increases and decreases kind of by category. And if you will flip over then to the next page, you will see that just our general increases basically to maintain would be the five hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. And now our new request by adding the guidance has gone up to eight hundred and twenty-four thousand and twenty-two dollars. Between the two of them then, that would make your request of a million, three eighty-five, eight thirty-seven that you would be asking as an increase to the county commissioners at this time.
Okay, Ms. Knight?
I'm okay with their request as they stand, um, like Mr. Rogers had said earlier, we may have to come back and and take a hard look at things if the overall current budget, you know, has decreased quite a bit from the county. Um, but my biggest concern is, um, you know, just being able to maintain the resource officers, uh, even if um, they're cut. Um, that's just a big, you know, concern of mine.
And I will say, this current budget, we received two grants from the state. I have included the matching in this particular request as it stands right now. We continue to get the two grants.
Okay.
And if we don't get the two grants, how much are we exposed?
Okay, Mike, if we do not get the two grants, let me go back over to that page.
Is that page eleven?
We have two hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars, which maintain the high school and the one Roverin'. So that's, that's basically the figure we would be looking at. Uh, the matching grant, I have seventy-seven thousand, nine eighty-eight in there with the fact that we normally would get like a hundred and fifty-five thousand from the state. So if the grant's not available, it would mean cutting the seventy-seven, nine eighty-eight for the match.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Messick?
Well, um, I feel like that when we go back and look, um, at the request, new requests, um, I definitely would like to try to keep the firefighter, uh, so we can implement that program that, uh, Mr. Rogers had brought to our attention. I feel like that that would benefit the students a lot. Um, and I, I really would like to see a valid adjustment for classified employees based on years of experience. I feel like that that is something that is really needed. I would like, um, uh, I would love to have the other requests, the elementary, um, coaches, the middle co, uh, school instructional coach, the, uh, data manager, another maintenance position, uh, the multi-tiered system of support, um, and guidance positions. Now, you know, whether they will grant that additional money, I don't know. I guess it wouldn't hurt to ask for it. It's certainly needed. But I am concerned that, um, asking for such a great deal amount of more money might be a concern. But I certainly would like to be able to, um, continue our programs with additional personnel. Um, so that said, that's all I have to say right now.
Ms. Tetter?
I agree with, uh, Ms. Knight as far as the keep maintaining all the SROs, hopefully that even in light of COVID, safety is the main concern for our students. And that state will recognize that. Did have a couple of questions to go through on the pages that we have in our handout, starting with page five. And Dr. Rice, Mr. Rose, I know, um, the teacher coach positions and Ms. McGee, I know those positions are important to you. Can you just go over be, coming from a high school where we didn't have teacher coaches, can you explain the difference again, why elementary and middle need these? For at a high school level?
Mr. Rose, would you like to explain the difference between middle and high school there?
Sure. Well, first of all, within the high school, that would be done, you know, by departments. And a lot of times you will see department heads kind of taking on some of that responsibility. When we start looking at the middle school and, and the role they take on there, and I'll let Ms. McGee chime in on this as well, because we're very familiar um, in what they are offering to the teachers. It's a teacher's support position. We receive data analysis from them, and I know that we do that across the board. But they are able to break it down, incorporate our i-ready data, and then we transfer that into practice. Um, it allows us to add beyond just content specialty to methods incorporation as well. Um, it improves the total instructional program. And I will say right now, um, the value with Ms. Elmsor is phenomenal. But she is handling three middle schools right now. And that is, um, that's quite a feat between the two of us to support those teachers instructionally with, with what they need. Um, so if we could add back that one position, um, it, it would just be such a huge gain for our teachers. Ms. McGee, would you like to, to talk about the elementary coach positions?
Yes, absolutely. So our elementary instructional coaches, um, they have been pivotal in helping with this, with the MTSS implementation. Um, they, they are essential when it comes to the foundations. Um, Jacinda just received her facilitator, um, certification. She has worked tirelessly, tirelessly supporting our schools that are putting in and implementing foundations. She has worked tires, tirelessly supporting our schools that are putting in and implementing foundations. Um, we are going to be able to get it into all of our schools with the exception of King Elementary because they use Letterland at the beginning of next year. Um, um, we have another instructional coach, Rachel, who handles all of the mathematics. She went and she was doing, in the middle of coaching cycles at Germantown Elementary to support their, um, math. Um, they serve their schools. Um, uh, we have another one who, um, Stacy Buck, who does the science of reading. And, um, she also is our science person. We, we just, they all are serving three schools. As a former instruct- instructional coach myself, um, I know what that is like. I know what it's like to serve three schools. And you work tires, tirelessly to help every teacher that you can and support them and do coaching cycles. You're helping students, you're assessing students, you're pulling data, you're helping teachers to find the right instructional practices that are best suiting for the student. You're providing interventions, you're providing best practices of instruction. Um, you're, you're actually, you're going outside of your box. For example, kindergarten assessments for, it's called KEA kindergarten entry assessment. It is changing next year. They will be providing supports um, to help implement the changes that goes through with that. Um, things that even though our principals are definitely strong and instructional leaders, um, they're also balancing the discipline, the managerial pieces of the schools and all of those types of things. It's just a, it's just a, um, they're doing a ton of things to help support our teachers. Um, and continuing that they provide professional development, professional, um, resources. There, it's just a combination of multiple things. And like Doug said about the data as well.
So Ms. Tetter, just to kind of make it as succinct as possible, when I'm looking at this and the things that we're gaining from our teacher coaches, they help tremendously K8 on implementing our professional learning communities. They're meeting with the teachers regularly to go over data, practice, numbers. Um, they are providing professional development all the time, um, to our teachers. And they're supporting implementation of all of our objectives, such as the multi-tiered system of supports. And they are preventing us from really going into outdated practices. They're keeping us current. Um, and they just take such a huge load on as far as the, the professional development.
It also, I'm sorry, one more thing, it also helps that consistency across our district. Um, you know, we constantly talk about wanting to keep that consistency about instruction and practices. And so that if our, if we have students that are transient, they go from one area of our district to another, you know, that that consistency is upheld and that, that makes such a huge difference when you have instructional coaches that are helping, you know, teachers understand, um, the pacing guides, the ma- the math frameworks, the, um, English language arts frameworks and those types of things. So.
These, um, individuals that you named, are they teacher coaches now or are they teachers taking on these additional responsibilities?
The three that I named are the three that are in elementary and the one that, um, Mr. Rose named is the one that's in middle school. Those are the current.
We currently have three elementary and one middle.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, and what we are asking for is to restore positions that we had. A couple of years ago to, to try to balance the budget, um, when we had a vacancy, we, we cut a coach at elementary level and we coached to cut a coach at the middle school level. Again, with the middle school, that reduced our teacher coaches by 50%. And whether that's a correlation or a causation, our test scores have slowly declined in middle school since then. Uh, we had less of a percentage cut in elementary school with losing the position. But we believe we have seen the effects of that as well. And so we're trying to restore these to get the instruction and the, again, the use of formative assessment in our schools and helping the teachers use that ongoing data to provide better support for our students. The, these coaches are valuable, very valuable in that. At a high school level, it would be more difficult because high school teachers in some way are the content experts anyway. And so we can use assistant principals to get statewide initiatives out to them better. Um, but, you know, because a teacher that teaches, you know, math is a math content expert. But to have a teacher coach that's a content expert in everything that a high school teaches would just be, you know, impossible, uh, where it's easier at a elementary or middle school level. Again, I say the word easy, Ms. McGee and Mr. Rose probably rolled their eyes. It's easier than trying to be the content expert at all the different subjects that a high school does.
Okay. Thank you for those explanations, um, and helping me understand that better.
Um, a great thing to do, be to talk to principals and some teachers. Um, every year I do a survey for feedback and I get lots of positive feedback. And I met with all the, um, principals at the middle of the year just to go over their middle of the year data tops. I mean, the one thing they were adamantly saying is, I need more days to take, I need more days, um, won't take my coke. Um, you know, um, so we have to remember that, you know, they're not just about what I think is good or what I think sits here.
Okay. Uh, Ricky or the net, let me get into the next question. And that's regarding the request number four for the maintenance position. If this is primarily for a locksmith, have they ever considered having that locksmith work contracted? Did anybody hear that question?
There was a lot of background noise right there, but Mr. Goins, did you hear her question?
Ricky, are you there?
Well, maybe Lynette can answer, or I mean, it's better for Ricky, but. And I guess we can get him back.
I'm calling Ricky now to check to see if we've lost him.
I, I just called him. He should be joint, he should be reconnecting real quick.
Ms. Tetter, this is Dr. Taylor. Wh- while we're waiting for Ricky to rejoin, I can give you a little bit of my experience. I can't speak to what we've done necessarily prior to this year here in Stokes County. But when you contract these types of services in a district with 19 schools like we have, it can, it can become very expensive very quickly. Not only are you buying materials at that point, but then you're paying for outside labor. So it, it can be more cost effective to have someone on staff when you have the number of schools that we have. Now Ricky may have more information as to what we have done in Stokes County prior to that, but that's just a general, some experience I have had, I have versus internal or internal versus contract work.
So we always have to buy the materials regardless, right?
Yes, ma'am. That, that's tru- that's correct, but when it's someone that's in-house, it, the, we, we control a little bit more of the labor cost, I guess is the best way of explaining that.
Yeah, Ms. Tetter, I apologize. I just stepped out of the office for a second. Um, what Dr. Taylor is saying is correct. Uh, but when we buy, we buy the materials wholesale. If we, if we have to call a locksmith in or someone in, they mark the materials up. So we get a better bang for our buck if we, if we can do this in-house.
Okay. It was just a thought when, you know, going through these.
I understand.
But Ricky, if we contracted somebody, could we not contract them for labor only and still provide the materials?
I guess we could. I've never tried it. A lot of people don't like doing that because I've did that on a couple of compressors. And what happens is if they put our materials in and it fails, then they come back and because it's our materials, they didn't furnish them. They don't warranty anything. Then we have to pay them to come back and redo it because they didn't supply the materials. I've did that on a few compressors and got burned a couple of times on compressor. So now, now that's why if I do a compressor, I will have the contractor supply the compressor. Because they're not putting their compressor in, they're putting our equipment in. We're just paying labor only. So they can't warranty the materials.
But we're talking about a lock, not a compressor, correct?
Well, that's true, but if they have to come back for some reason and, and it fails, we're gonna have to pay them to come back and do it again. Because they won't warranty anything.
Okay. And if it fails, we're having to pay our guy to come back out and do it again, even though it's captured under his cost, correct?
Correct. But we're doing it cheaper upfront with, with our, with our own in-house staff.
Um, may I ask a question? This is Pat. Um, is this maintenance position only for a locksmith for the county? Or will he be doing other duties in maintenance?
He will be doing other duties, um, with, it's, it's coming in as a, a carpenter one. That's the lowest position we can bring someone in. But he's gonna be trained by our locksmith because I feel our locksmith's only gonna be here just a, just a few more years. And that's a trait that you can, a trade that you just can't learn in a few weeks or a few months. And then once, uh, uh, our locksmith retires, he will become our full-time locksmith. But he would be doing other duties. I mean, all of my maintenance staff, they're not just, they're not just tied to one skill. We do everything and have to help each other do everything.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, my, yeah. My next question on page seven, the MTSS with, um, statewide cuts anticipated. Is this a program that any of you see? Um, you know, it's just a, a current trend of a program like so many others in the past? And this one falling by the wayside eventually?
Ms. Tetter, I do not see that one falling by the wayside. Um, this is actually, you know, we are steering away from the discrepancy model moving forward. And this will be the process that I do believe is going to, um, help to identify the needs of all of our students. And it is going to also steer identification as well. So, um, this is a model that we're shifting to statewide and, um, it can remain a discrepancy model as well.
Okay. I just, um, wanted y'all's feedback on that. Thank you, Mr. Rose.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, and obviously none of us can predict the future to know when the next model will come. But there has been no discussion that I'm aware of at all at the state level that this is going away time soon. This is the direction that the state is, is pushing at, until further notice.
Okay. Um, like Ms. Messick said, uh, number seven, including agreement with, with number seven, and thank you so much for including the guidance councils on page eight. Um, when it gets to the other areas past, uh, on page nine, I did have a few additional questions. Does, are we gonna be getting, page nine, are we getting any new enhancements to Power School? I, I don't see an increase, but I was wondering if there's anything new given, um, remote learning that we could proceed that Power School can be capable of, but that we're not utilizing currently? Have, have we looked at that in case, in the event that, uh, remote learning continues at some point past this school year? I don't know if, what Power School, I mean, I think it can probably do a whole lot more than we have used it for. So I'm just throwing that out there. Um, wondering if this budget number is going to be sufficient in the event for additional remote learning?
Ms. Slager, uh, you probably can speak to that. Uh, I'm not aware of anything else instructly that Power School will help with. We've already got, I mean, it's more of a recording tool for, you know, grades attendance. It, you know, student data, uh, and I believe we're using it pretty much to its fullest capacity now. But Ms. Slager, can you speak to that?
Yes, good morning. Um, the remote learning, most of the time what Power School has, comes at an extra cost. So I feel like that what we have budgeted is sufficient unless Anna and Doug think otherwise.
Okay, I was just, when I saw that, I was, what, just wondering if, if, um, I just wanted your thoughts on that mainly, ma'am, thank you.
The, um, I can tell you the amount budgeted there, um, could possibly decrease. I am looking at, um, negotiating, uh, I guess you could call it that with some things with Power School.
Okay. That would be helpful. On to page 10, student health supplies, there's no increase there. And when kids are returning back, whenever they come back, I'm wondering, do we have enough? Are we going to be given extra funding under that? I'm foreseeing the need for face masks, um, gloves, what have you, some, some of these things. Where would those supplies be? What would they be funded from? Or is that something that the state is going to divvy out or? What are y'all thinking there? Dr. Taylor?
Well, we hope that the state, once they finalize some of the things they have in the works, we're hoping there may be some more money from the state level. I, I won't speak for Dr. Rice, but after talking with our nurse, nurses periodically and looking at what we currently have on hand, it would be nice if we could determine how much the state is going to give us before we put any local money into that. Hopefully we'll know something from the state within maybe this week possibly. I think they, uh, the House and the Senate have pretty much come together on a state package. So maybe we'll know something, uh, this week. Dr. Rice, do you have anything else to add about that?
Well, Ms. Moore, you, uh, you can certainly chime in as well. We have been given a little bit of state money in advance where we have ordered some mask. Try, we had ordered gloves right before this happened, actually. So we're trying to, when we get some money to, to buy supplies, we're trying to recode that. The problem is some of the things we can't order right now. We did order some face masks the other day. We're looking at some cleaning systems, uh, for our buildings and to, to try to make things better in the building with, that we could use all the time, uh, with COVID-19 as well. But again, the federal cares budget may have some flexibility in that as well. We're still waiting on some guidance. We're not wanting to, you know, blow our local budget on this until we find out what's we're gonna be paid for at another level. Ms. Moore, would you like to add anything to that?
That's fine, and that's what we're doing currently. We are using the state Alama COVID-19 to pay for supplies and things that we currently, uh, have been in our, also ordering. I talked to Ricky this morning. We've gotten a advertisement to come in about hand sanitizer and he's even checking on that. And again, those type things are coming from the state dollars, uh, as we speak. The state dollars that we have now will run out June 30th unless they do an extension. But, um, so far that's the way we've been paying for what we've done.
Okay. Um, then on to number eight, Mr. Sands, uh, the testing supplies, since we're not testing this semester, will some of that carry, carry over? Um, how does that work? How does that work?
That's primarily local, and what we have used that in the past for is testing for cognitive abilities for third grade. And then shredding of all the paper pencil materials that would come in. With the fact that we've gone online for a lot of that, that probably would be a decrease in the amount of shredding that we would have to do. Cogat continues to work on a yearly basis, but really, that amount should be sufficient, if not more than we would need.
Did we get that test in this year? For third grade?
We did, we were able to complete it for everyone, but one student at Jermington Elementary, and that was due to a mother who was pregnant and did not want to bring the child back in to complete. He completed six of the nine required tests. So we have the option of coming in the fall when he returns if if the parent requests it, we can assess him using a different form of that test.
Great. That's wonderful, good deal. Number nine, is that Lynette, does postage fall under number nine? And
Postage is a code, but anything supply-wise there, envelopes, wood, paper, but your postage is a separate code.
Okay, well, I'm just wondering if we can save a little bit, now, any little bit we can save is helpful. Pay stubs. Do we really have to print the pay stubs since most of every probably 99% of people have a direct deposit? Is there any way we can think about not running those and saving on that cost in the envelope? And postage? All that? And then for those who don't have direct deposit? I know some agencies require that. And just wondered if we've ever thought about cost savings in those areas and then making it a requirement for direct deposit?
We have, and in fact, for, due to the virus, for the last two months, we have not actually sent out the Dr. Rice did talk to principals of our leadership about the fact of maybe not doing that, so he's going in the direction, and Dr. Rice, you can speak on this, stopping that. I don't know about enforcing direct deposit. We have had a lot of people to go to deposit since this has happened, so that is another option that we can look at. Dr. Rice, you want to respond?
Well, as Ms. Moore said, we did ask for feedback because to try to keep our social distancing and people out of the building, we have not handed out those paper copies of the check stubs the last two pay periods. I asked for feedback from principals this last week if they've had any negative feedback, and they said none at all. So that is one thing we would like to move forward with. Now, the other question is, you know, we're happy to say you have to have a bank account in order to do direct deposit. That's something I would not want to do without your blessing because there may be a handful of people that would come back and complain about that. You're right, that is something that a lot of businesses do require. And I've lived through some of those transitions in other districts. And, you know, after the initial few disgruntled, finished their complaining, it kind of goes away. We're happy to do that. We think this is probably a good time. Ms. Moore, after we've had this recent number of people that have signed up for direct deposit, do you have any idea how many of this last paycheck still got paper copies?
Dr. Rice, I'd want to verify this, but it's probably dropped that we have more than, I'd say, 30 to 40 people right now.
Well, like you said, Dr. Rice, now might be a good time to make this transition and just say that's how we're gonna do it.
Well, and we can certainly keep this pattern going for the majority of our employees. If the board would still like for the 30 or so that are getting paper checks to do that, we can continue that with just those 30 or so. Or we could say, you know what, this is our new system. If you want a paycheck, you need a bank account. If, again, if 30 or 40 people, we can do that either way. It would save our, it would save us a little bit of money, it would save us a little bit of time to go all electronic, and that's certainly the direction we want to go.
We could maybe grandfather those 30 or 40, encourage them to do direct deposit, but then if some are just set in their ways, we could grandfather them, but going forward with any new hires, think about the requirement for the direct deposit.
And I think that would be a good plan, to be honest.
Thank you, okay. Page 11, number eight. Goes back to what we were talking about earlier with the medical supplies, the system-wide custodial supplies?
That is correct. Right now, we are using some of this COVID-19 money to buy these additional supplies in light of COVID-19. And so the other number has stayed the same for a budget number, but we're using these extra sources to buy the extra needed things at this time.
Do you think that they're gonna give the schools those disinfectant? I don't know what you call them, those machines you see on TV, look like a blower? That you go into businesses or the rooms and spray out the disinfectant?
I don't believe they're going to give them to us, but Ricky is looking at purchasing some for us. He's been talking with some other districts who have been looking at a couple of different models. We discussed it late last week. I don't have the update. Ricky, have those been ordered?
Yes, I actually sent the purchase order out this morning, and what we're looking at are like battery-powered backpack sprayers. We looked at the backpack sprayers that, like, made by Steel, but there was concerns about carbon monoxide getting in the building because they're gas-powered engines, so we went with the battery backpacks.
And we have at least one for each school?
Yes, it'd be one for each school.
Now Ricky, I also remember Steel makes battery-powered backpacks too. If that's more feasible.
Okay, I'll look into that.
Okay, so any of the disinfectants that go into these machines that we hope to be covered under whatever we're gonna get from the state?
Yes, and also we're hoping to pay for these backpacks from the state allotment as well. We got clarification from DPI that they would allow that last week.
Wonderful. Okay, going on to page 12, with the CDL physicals and licenses. That was a decrease. Where does the drug screening that we're requiring now fall? Is it in that line item?
Okay, that figure has been decreased based on history of what I'm seeing happening like for this year. Because annually, it's just coming up at different times for different employees. So that's why I have decreased that. And also the drug testing part would be included in that as well. If we had to do that for our bus drivers.
Okay. Number 13, monitoring Johnson Controls. It wasn't in last year's budget, but now? What's that about Ricky?
I'll go ahead and speak and let Ricky chime in. We've been having to pay this, but it had not been budgeted. And with the amount of money, not knowing how the budget might go, I went ahead and included that. Now Ricky can explain to you what it is, more so than I can.
Ms. Tetter, when this was first set up, it was supposed to have been the savings pays for Johnson Controls. We were supposed to have budgeted our utilities and added 3% each year. And then that savings supposed to have paid this bill. But in some cases, I don't think it's worked out that way, so Ms. Moore just felt like it was better to put it in as a line item, but we do have to pay it every year.
Okay, so not only are we not getting any savings, we had to pay for their upgrade to their equipment or whatever it was that we had to do $100,000 to last year.
Correct. Well, when we say savings, they don't use the word savings, they use the word cost avoidance. In other words, we would have paid this money if we hadn't went with Johnson Controls. They call it cost avoidance.
They would say that our power bill would have been $25,000 more last year had we not used them.
Correct.
Okay, I mean, is there anything that we can go back to the contract and say, this is, you know, you said we would have savings in the form of cost avoidance, but we don't? And we're having the budget for
Ms. Tetter, according to Johnson Controls, the report that they presented to Poplar Springs, they do meet the savings. They are saving the amount.
And then it's $23,000 above that?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, Lynette, the $23,000 is what they charge. And rather than being able to predict a budget of saying, well, we would have spent this much on electricity, so we're gonna budget an extra $23,000 for electricity, and then hope it comes in lower than that, so we have the money to pay this bill. That's why we just went ahead and put it in the line item because that is a bill, and then we do our electricity budget by, based on previous year's expenses and predicted rate increases, correct?
That is correct, Dr. Rice. I don't go be anything that they're saying you might have a savings on. I actually look at the previous year and try to estimate electrical. You're correct on that.
Okay. Moving on, page 13, under dues. These local these local things like chamber and rotary, I feel it's very important for us as a school system to have a faith in these organizations, but given tight budget time, I'm wondering if we can go to anything local and say, you know, we want to continue partnership with you, but could you consider waiving these costs for the next year or so? Just a little cost savings, I'm looking wherever we can save. Because I know one of those can be quite costly for dues, and I don't know how many we have that do go to those, that we do pay dues for, but just thought that would be worth looking at right there. And then on to page 14. Lynette says, under communications, does, do you divide that up among the elementary schools equally? Or how does that work for telephone operations? And what I'm getting at is Nancy Reynolds, their cost, if I heard right at one point, with them being under thorough communications was significantly more than, say, Poplar Springs, who who do we use CenturyLink for them? Or, I'm not sure, but is there a way to give Nancy Reynolds a little bit more if the cost is proportionately different for them?
This is Lynette. I actually went off the meeting, but I'm back. Can I respond at this time to her question?
Yes, please.
Okay, this part right here actually is for the communications far as our office and operations, meaning like maintenance and the bus garage and sales service and that kind of thing. What we do for the schools is they receive the school operational allotment based on their ADM. So if they choose to pay for their phone services from that school operational allotment, they may do so. Some schools do that, some do not. They just take it from their school funds. And in this budget, if you will notice, we did increase the school operational up to $25, not increase, but it will be $25 per ADM if that stays in. So that's how that works for the phone systems at the school level. Some do cost more than others based on what they have.
Okay. And then page 16. Under operations, the increase of number two and number three.
Okay, and number two, we're looking at our efficiency rating for our transportation has decreased. We're looking at kind of what we have anticipated that we would pay out. Of course, we're not sure how we're gonna end up for this school year based on the change due to the COVID-19. And then with Ricky's repairs, that had not been increased in several years, and in meeting with him, he felt like we need to do an increase there. I'll be glad for Dr. Taylor, Ricky, to respond to additional information.
Well, one reason I requested the increase, every year our schools are getting older and just things are breaking more. And we need to do more repairs.
Dr. Taylor, I thought we were working on that efficiency score. Now it's going up $100,000, so what's up with that?
Yes, ma'am, we will continue Mr. Langford and his staff, and I'll let him speak in just a second. He and his staff continue to look at the number of buses that we're running, routes, the number of stops, the number of students. You're right, that is something we're working on. However, it does not, unfortunately, does not change overnight. But we do hope to be able to come back to you in the fall with some updated information in regard to the number of buses that we're running, et cetera. Now, please know that the easiest, the quickest way to raise the efficiency score is to remove buses from the road. But when you do that and you start impacting stops and the length of routes, et cetera, that we would all have to be on the same page because there's gonna be some feedback and probably some complaints. But that is the quickest and easiest way to raise the efficiency by removing the numbers of buses that you are utilizing. We are looking at that, we're looking at routes, stops, et cetera. Brad, is anything else you'd like to add?
Yes, Ms. Tetter, this is Brad. I, Dr. Taylor is absolutely right. And we've got like a simulator that we can do a little bit of modeling to see what cutting buses would do. And in order to get our efficiency rating back to, say, 89, which is what it's been on average, it's now at about 80, a little over 83, we would have to cut six buses. Now, if we're running 75 buses right now, and what has happened is over the past few years, our ridership has gone down. Of course, our total population for the school has gone down. But you do hit a point to where if you continue cutting buses, it's gonna increase ride times dramatically. Because you're still, you're still transporting students that live, you know, far away from the schools. The majority of our riders are probably the kids that live farthest away from their school. So even if you cut buses, you're gonna still have to go out there to pick up those kids. Our average bus route is over 90 miles a day. So if you cut buses, you're gonna be adding to those miles, and you're gonna be, yes, we'll have more kids on a bus, but then ride times will be a lot, a lot more. Right now, the average ride time for the kids that ride the longest is around, is two hours or more. We're gonna be going up to two and a half to three. At what point will the community just not not accept that, you know, and that's what Dr. Taylor was saying. We can give you all some examples of how this, how the cuts will increase. But we'll all have to be on the same page because I think we'll get a lot of pushback from the community if we increase ride times dramatically over what we already have.
Right, and is that ride time coming and going? Or just one way?
That's, that's coming and going. I mean, you've got some kids. Most of our routes, we try to make them circular so that the first kid on in the morning is the first kid off in the afternoon. So, you know, they do ride a long way So, you know, they do ride a long way in the morning, but a short time in the afternoon. But some of our routes are linear, like, for example, Meadowbrook. They leave Meadowbrook and go out to the furthest part of the county and start picking up kids and working their way back. Then in the afternoon, they're dropping kids off as they go. So that kid that's on first in the morning is off last in the afternoon, and so they're riding in some cases, two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon. Uh, some of our routes are the same way, and it's just because if we, if we took a bus and passed by people's houses trying to go all the way out to the furthest point and work our way back, we're gonna get pushback from that. People's gonna say, well, why don't you drop my kid off as you go out? And so that's why we reverse it in the afternoon for those types of stuff.
Gotcha. Okay. Um, thank you, everybody, for, um, answering all my questions. I've had a lot. One, one more thing, uh, and we can maybe talk about that more under COVID, but Dr. Rice, when it comes to charter schools here, with the, um, surveys that went out, what, last week? About do you want to continue, or do you want to take your, or keep going? Have, have any of the schools, to your knowledge, have you got any feedback yet? Is there any, um, are we getting any calls that say, I don't wanna re-enroll, or anything like that happening yet? I hope not, but.
I'm not aware of anybody unenrolling from us due to COVID-nineteen, and I'm not sure what survey you're talking about. I've not seen a survey asking people if they wanted to continue or not.
Uh, the high school survey.
The high school survey was about
Continuing with the survey is what I meant.
I'm, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I, I'm referring to that nine through eleven survey. Do, do they wanna take their March grader? Or, um, continue through the end of the semester survey, or whatever?
Okay, I, I've not seen the results of that yet. Uh, that is, Mr. Rose, have you seen any of the results of that at this point?
I have not, but that one was just dealing with the grading options and outlining, uh, the grading policy that the state had shared out to us. And getting the state
I just wanted to, triggered, triggered any calls from parents at this point, so if, if you haven't heard anything, that's good.
I have not. We are trying to set up individual meetings with students as well, um, just to make sure that they understand their options. Uh, you know, for example, if you have an eighty-eight average uh, back on the day that we got out, and since then, you've raised your average to above an A, then you would want to keep your grading going. If you were, you know, at a ninety-one, now it's dropped to an eighty-eight, you may want to go back and keep that grade. So it's, you know, we're trying to make sure that we're having individual discussions with people as well to make sure they understand. The survey was the first step in that, and I've not received any feedback from that survey, no parent calls to complain, but again, I, I've not talked with the principal since that's been finalized to see what their feedback has been.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you so much.
And Ms. Tetter, I think you can probably tell, we have been pretty meticulous about the feedback that we get from the state and communicating that to parents, and trying to put our own personal touch on that as well, as far as, you know, reaching out to the students, having personal conversations, and then, you know, making sure that we're laying eyes on their grades as they make those requests. Because we are going to help to guide them to do what's best for each individual student. So I think it's an opportunity for us to show our community, um, that we're gonna do the right thing by their kids.
I, I, I know that you all are doing that, and I appreciate it. I just wanted to, um, ask about that feedback. Thank you so much.
Ms. Tetter, I will also add real quick, the enrollment process continues. We get paperwork, um, almost on a daily basis, and we are processing those as we receive those. So that process is continuing while this is all taking place.
Thank you.
Is that everything, Ms. Tetter?
For now, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, then, on to me, under current expense, uh, and I hate to be the voice of gloom and doom, but there's no way I, I can vote for a bu, uh, a budget that goes in and increases current expense one point, almost one point four million dollars. Uh, with eight hundred and twenty-four being new or added positions. Now, the, I, I think Ms. Messick touched on it, and I agree wholeheartedly. The first responder firefighter, I say we put that as a line item. If they wanna fund it, because it's gonna help their end budget. Uh, so that can be almost like a separate, if you want, if you wanna fund it, we will do it. If not, it's probably gonna have to wait till a non-COVID-nineteen a year. Uh, I still think we need to leave the salary adjustments for satisfied employees, because we're asking our people to do more with less. But those are the two, uh, with the exception of re, uh, the maintenance position, because that's something we can't just rapidly recover from. If we lose a locksmith, we can't just hire a locksmith at that lower rate. We're gonna have to pay out the, uh, uh, unabsorbent cost. So those are the only three that, oh, under the new request, not in priority order. Those are the only three I could vote for. And again, only the first responder would be in a separate line item for me to be able to vote for it. So that's what I had to say, and we can discuss it more when we get to action, because we're gonna have to vote on a budget today. So with that being said, we will move on, and I'm driving, so discussion of alternative accountability model for Meadowbrook twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Rogers, before we do that, can I just make sure that I have the capital, um, as you want, uh, and let me try to present that real quick, just to make sure that I have what your request was.
Okay. You'll have to read it off. I'm, I'm actually in the car as we speak.
Okay, uh, I have number one, emergencies, reason for emergency. Number two, fall protection for safety. Number three, London Fire Alarm for safety. Number four, South Stokes Gym Floor for safety. Number five, King Elementary Ramp for safety. Number six, Lawsonville Roof for roof leaks. Number seven, Nancy Reynolds Roof for roof leaks. Number eight, West Oaks Chillers for efficiency. Number nine, South Stokes Boiler for efficiency. Number ten, Pine Grove Boiler for efficiency. Number eleven, gym refinishing, maintain, maintain floors. Number twelve, North Stokes High School Roof for roof leaks. Is that the order that you said y'all wanted that in?
That's fine with me. The only thing I would add is when we say efficiency, that doesn't sound ac- accurate, because it's not really an efficiency, it's an obsolete. Uh, I know, and I think Ricky said that the South Stokes Boiler has now started to leak. The West Oaks Chiller, when it goes out, we can't maintain educational atmosphere. Uh, on the, uh, on the Pine Grove Boiler, I'm not sure, Ricky, you could weigh in. But instead of saying efficiency, end of life, critical.
Well, and to be honest, we have struggled with the wording of that, because even though air conditioning heat in a way is a comfort, we didn't wanna write comfort, uh, efficiency is there because of the cost of repairing parts and trying to get obsolete parts and all of that. We struggled with the wording there. Um, and, and maybe end of life of equipment uses is the right way to say that.
Uh, or just give a, a, a brief description under West Oaks Chillers. Um, no spare parts, have any reset daily.
And if, if I might add something, that, that could be considered safety, health and safety, because it has been so hot in there at some ti, sometimes. It's been a health concern for medically fragile students for, um, whatever health reason they might have. I ca, I can't think of, I don't know if it was diabetic students that were getting sick or asthmatic, but that, that has happened before.
Yeah, on the West Oaks Chiller, we've had train out several times, and just trying to see if we could get parts on it, and they keep telling us it's just worn out.
Yeah, I mean, I could put end of life, obsolete. And then when they ask, we can tell them, hey, when it goes down, we've gotta shut ha, at least half the school down, if not the whole school down, because we may not have air conditioner, and then, but you could put end of, end of life, safety. Cause realistically, I know the one at, at the Autotech building, if it's ten degrees outside and we can't heat it, that's kind of a safety issue. We can't teach Autotech that day, or until we get a new boiler. Now, what's the Pine Grove Boiler situation, Ricky?
Well, the, the boiler at South Stokes, it's a nineteen-seventy-eight model, and at Pine Grove, it's just the burner for the boiler, uh,
Okay.
It's the, the maj, the major parts, like the fan housing and stuff like that, is obsolete. We can't get parts for it.
All right, so what's the, what's the reason for the burner? Just, is it leaking, or?
That's Pine Grove. The South Stokes Boiler is leaking. It's a nineteen-seventy-eight model. At Pine Grove, the burner, the major parts on it, from the main, the OEM parts are obsolete.
Okay.
Universal parts, like your nozzles, your electrodes, transformers, things like that are universal. It fits all the burners. They, we can still get those. But the OEM parts, it's just for that manufacturer, are obsolete.
Okay, then for the chiller and the burner, we can just put obsolete, no parts available? And then for the one for South, obsolete, uh, leaking, safety. Is that time to go with the board?
I think that's, I think that's more clarified, and I think that when the, the county commissioners see those term, that terminology, they'll see that it's, you know, really needed. So I like the new terminology better.
So Mike, are you saying not put safety down with West, but, but put it with South? If so, that would change our priority order? Am I understanding?
Leave, leave, leave the priority the way it is. Cause I think the West Oaks, to me, is still the top priority one. Uh, and you could just, eh, you know, for West Oaks, you could put obsolete failing, because it's obsolete and it's failing. We did, you know, efficiency just does not, it sounds like we're trying to get LED light bulbs to get rid of incandescents, and that's, that's far from the truth.
Isn't that the chiller that, uh, they have to set every morning? Someone has to drive over there and reset it every morning. Is that right, Ricky?
That's correct. And I don't know the word. At West Stokes, obsolete would be correct, because we can still get parts, but train can't tell us what to replace unless they start replacing every part on it. The compressors, all the expansion valves, uh, we've done, replaced some of the, uh, electronic controls on it, and it still continues to do it.
So just failing system would probably be better than
Yes.
Just put failing system. So how many years have you had to go over there and reset that every morning?
It's been sporadic for the last four or five, but last year, it was, it's gotten worse. It was probably four out of five days, we'll go over and reset it. It got to the point, I have a ma, a, a maintenance technician goes by every morning to check it.
Thank you.
I've
All right, I'm good then.
That with West Oaks Chiller, it says failing system, South Stokes Boiler, leaking dash safety, and Pine Grove Burner, obsolete dash failing system.
Is it still functioning, Ricky, or is Pine Grove still functioning, or?
Yes, Pine Grove is still functioning, and, uh, we're just concerned that one of the major parts, like the fan housing or something like that, is gonna break, and we can't get a part for it.
Right. So you can just put, you know, obsolete, obsolete, no parts available? And we'll have that discussion going, okay? We're gonna shut a school down. But now, once we get, once we get a new burner on it, we're good there, though, right, Ricky?
Yes, we should be fine there.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, so board, I'll put it to y'all. Y'all wanna run back through cap, cap, capital on the on the new items that we include or don't include? Or do you wanna wait and have it on discussion fraction? And talk about it again then?
Uh, would you repeat that?
Uh, basically, do we wanna, to narrow down whether we include those items, that eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, will we trim from that list now or later? Cause we can do it in action, take a motion, and then discuss it, or I suggest we go ahead and tackle it now, because there's eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars worth of, uh, additional items, new requests, not in priority. And I know I, I'm not gonna be able to sign off on it, and I think, Ms. Messick, you expressed concern. My, my board, if we send up one point four million in additional, when everybody else is being asked to cut or maintain, we better be able to justify everything as to why we've gotta have it over why we didn't have it last year. So Ms. Knight, we'll go ahead and start with you then. I'll make the decision.
As far as what I would recommend, uh, cutting out of the current expense? Is that your question?
Do you, do you wanna cut anything out, or when you vote, or you, I mean, I can't ask how you're gonna vote, so.
Yeah, I've got mixed feelings, um, you know, do we pr, ask for what we can, and then wait for the number they give us, or or trim now? Um, I mean, if that's
My theory is, we're gonna
Yeah, I'm, I'm
I recommend that you don't, yeah, don't add a hundred and four, a hundred, one point four million dollars to a budget to trim, because that's gonna be like, we're not taking this COVID-nineteen financial crisis serious. So I want everybody to know that the school system is doing our best to maintain with what we've got, and we don't know what next year's enrollment's gonna be. Maybe up, maybe down.
Mm-hmm.
So do you wanna think about it and
Can you, can you, um, review again what you wanted to keep? You said you wanted to keep the, uh, salary adjustment to staff, number seven, and you wanted to
Yeah, that's, that's retention.
First responder, first responder to be a separate item? And then what else were you proposing to cut out?
Uh, everything but the, the proposed maintenance, because that's gonna cost us more money if we don't fill it now. We're, we're filling at the lowest, at the lowest rate we can buy if our guy that's sixty-seven decides, hey, with COVID-nineteen, I don't wanna come to work anymore. We're without a locksmith, and where it's gonna cost us more than forty-four thousand dollars to repla, uh, to repair a lock. Right, Ricky? Okay. So those are the only three that I, my personal vote is gonna be for keeping. And even the firefighters, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to fund it. We're gonna suggest it.
Mm-hmm.
Because that is a, that helps fill the county's emergency responder network internally also, so it's not just a So it's not just a school. Not a benefit, strict benefit for the students, the benefits of the county.
Yes, I totally understand how, you know, they could benefit in the future from it hopefully. Um. I mean, you know, it's a, it's a hard thing as far as you want to see students better supported, uh, and staff supported with the instructional coaches, especially if students are the ones benefiting from that extra support staff, uh, as well as we've heard now on a couple of years budgets about that TMS data manager and how there's one person that can do it, you know?
Yeah, I'm with you. If this wasn't a COVID-19 year.
I do have one quick question, Dr. Rice. The TMS, is that, maybe I'm, I'm confused on the wording. Which one is, uh, programs for buses and everything?
TMS is the program for buses and then the, the split would be also to assist with power school, but TMS is our bus routing and student assignment bus program.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, this is Brad Langford and also Dr. Rice. I just wanted to add one thing, if I may, about the TMS person. We're sort of in the same boat there as with the locksmith, with having only one person that can operate that program. If they leave, we're going to, we're going to be without anybody that can operate that program. So that's why it's, it has been on the agenda for a couple of years. Um, but I do understand the idea of trying to keep the budget as low as possible. And, you know, if we have to, we'll be doing the way we're doing, but, um, it is very important.
Is that something that we could? Uh, oh, let me ask this question real quick. Cheryl, is that something that we can bring somebody in part-time just to get them trained? Alright, part-time and save on that big a dollar?
Like cut it in half?
Uh, yes, we could probably have someone, uh, part-time and get them trained. The training is sort of like the same thing with the locksmith. It's a, it's about an 18-month learning curve for that job. It does take a long time to get proficient at doing bus routing and working with the TMS program.
Okay. Alright, Ms. Knight?
Yes, I'm, I'm good with your part-time suggestion and getting them trained in that area of learning that program and cut that 47, 571, maybe even in half. And then your other suggestions of, uh, keeping the maintenance position, um, letting the county decide to fund the first responder firefighter program, that'd be up to them and then leaving the salary adjustment classified employees. And I, I would love to see all of this. I do think, you know, the instructional coaches, the guidance positions is all very much needed, um, for students, but if our budget is going to be very slim, um, I'm with you on suggesting a smaller number. So those are my recommendations. Include what Mr. Rogers said and then include the part-time just TMS person. That's all I have.
Alright, Ms. Messick?
Um, as I had stated before, I, I'm sorry, I really do feel like that if this was a better budget year, if we had not gone through this pandemic, then I would be in favor of extra elementary, uh, instructional coaches and middle school instructional coaches. Um, you know, I'd be in sport of, um, things like this. But I do feel like that Mr. Rogers is right in the fact that since the county commissioners has let people know that they are going to have a smaller budget year for people, that maybe we should really look at what we're going to request. So my idea is with the, uh, maintenance position, I would recommend half-time training, but only training for the bus route. And doing that, because I feel like that, that is something that is really needed. And, um, I feel like that if we get a part-time person, they would not be split, that they would just concentrate on the bus routes and learning that program. And then I agree with the county funding the first responder firefighter, uh, because I do feel like it would benefit the county in the long run. I do want to keep the salary adjustment for classified employees based on years of experience. Uh, that has been needed for a long time and I'm glad that's included. So, um, I feel like that if we break it down to this, then maybe we can get at least the amount of money we got last year plus the, you know, this additional. Did I repeat everything? I think I did, that I had said before. And I do want to say one thing that I didn't say because we had moved on. I do really want the resource officers. And I do hope that we get those grants from the state because, uh, our citizens rely on the resource officers being in the schools to protect their students and we have them in there to protect the staff and the students. So I really do want those. That in a sidebar. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Tatter?
Okay, um, if we're going to try to prioritize these, I would put number seven as number one. Let's take care of who we already have in-house and give them something because they deserve that. It's way past due. Um, then I would go with the firefighter position because I agree that that would benefit not just our students, but the county as a whole. Um, I'm going to respectfully disagree a little bit about the TMS data manager and say that both parts of that position are equally important because not only the bus part, I understand, um, that, but I think the data manager with our elementary schools being, um, the, the front, the office manager at the elementary schools with the number of hats that person wears, we need just as much data manager as we do TMS operator for our schools. Um, half-time staff manager would go a long way to help those elementary schools. So I, and not in favor of just doing a half-time just solely for TMS. Um, because I think both parts are, are equally important. Um, the maintenance position and, and the guidance, the ma- maintenance, I, I tend to disagree on, on the training curve for that. Um, I think we could probably get maybe somebody qualified right off the bat. Um, especially in this day and time. And then I'm going to stress again the importance of my, my personal feeling on the guidance positions because, um, there is no telling what we're going to come back to, uh, with, with, um, our, our children. And our guidance counselors are stretched thin as it is, again, with the elementary schools and three of them traveling between two. I mean, I, I want to shoot for the moon and get the three and a half, but still keep and, and see if we could, you know, come out with, with one or two there. But then as we've been, as y'all been talking about this, I'm wondering with the job market, the way it is right now, if we could look at these positions, if we can't fund them for, with full-time employees of our own, if we could talk to some kind of, um, temporary agency and put some teachers for the next school year through those because of the number of people who are out there looking for jobs. And this could be, um, for the TMS data manager, the maintenance position, and the guidance counselors and possibly even the teacher coaches as, um, temporary employees that be full-time, but we don't pay the benefits from them. We just, um, go through like Debbie staffing, because we, there, there's probably some top-notch folks out there who would be willing to do a, a year job with us now and see, you know, if the budget improves for next year. So I'm wondering if we could, I know we have to vote on this, but I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on that.
Okay, thank you. Uh.
Nice. Let me, uh, say, I don't know if I said maintenance position that, uh, locksmith, but, uh, I was for that too. Okay, sorry, but I think I'm.
Yeah.
Did all the things.
I kind of get.
Sorry, I didn't put on that.
Oh, that's fine. Uh, Brad, let me ask you a question. Angel Whitaker, can she be trained on the TMS program? Because it sounds like you're wanting, or you feel that not wanting, you feel there's a need in case we lose somebody, we won't have anybody. Could somebody like Angel be trained on the system to fill in as a stopgap? So that we don't have a black, so we don't have a hole like we're looking at with the, with the other, uh, with the maintenance position?
I'd be willing to, to look at about any, any opportunity, but now Angel's, she's pretty busy with what she does do, but, um, again, I mean, we could, um, I mean, I, I don't, um, I don't know if she would have enough time to devote, because you've got to go to some training and you would be gone all day and I, I think it would, it might interfere with some of her other duties at the garage.
Yeah, I was just thinking to try to, I mean, if, in your discussion, we have a TMS coordinator. We're just afraid if we lose them, we need one, correct?
Well, it, true, that's, that's a big fear, but also have somebody to help with the day-to-day operation of TMS. And, and like I say, I, I think Dr. Rice said it right. A half-time person would, would really be what we would need to help her. And that's why he was looking at that position being half TMS, half student, uh, data man.
Okay, so in essence, we could 29 and then three-quarter hours a week, have somebody work four hours a day with one and two hours a day with the other and we're there. One way or the other, and then you've got, it's better than nothing and it gives us a pos- uh, possible to fall back on, correct?
Yes.
Just, just until the, and, and hopefully it becomes a full-time position after, uh, uh, after COVID-19, maybe next year, if we say, yeah, it's been a success, we just need to add X amount. We're, we're incrementally increasing budget. We're not doing that. And right now, everybody's having to wear multiple hats. So, you know, I'm not, and not to throw Angel on the bus, maybe somebody better. I'm just saying we need to look within to see if there's somebody we can get trained up to speed in the event we lose somebody, which maintenance, we know that's not a, that's good, that's going to be an opening sooner rather than later, is the only reason I'm pushing for that one. So with that being said, my list would be salary adjustment for everybody, because if not retention, when this does kick back off, we're going to lose people if they're, if we don't take care of them. And then, uh, first responder goes last, uh, uh, let's see, the, I'm sitting here trying to do this, driving, that caused a massive pileup. Uh, thank God for smart cars. Uh, the maintenance position would be second. Uh, the first responder, to my list now, the first responder is in essence a, uh, a county commissioner decision. So first would be, uh, salary adjustment, second would be the maintenance position, third would be a part-time data slash TMS manager. And then fourth would be the EMS in its own line item. It's not really fourth, it's 1A. So throw it like that. That's, that's my personal feelings and we can finish this up when we go to action. So with that being said, we're going to go ahead and move on or we'll be here 14 days trying to get this one done. So alternative accountability model.
Yes, uh, board, this is just the same procedures that we've done in the past. Uh, Meadowbrook, because of its alternative status, is allowed to go through three options. Option A, which is basically be treated by, like all other schools with the A through F designations. Uh, option B is the one where they are measured basically by a progress model, model. And then option C is where they create their own. Um, speaking with Mr. Hall, we have always done the option B, which has worked out for our schools and so that is his recommendation. So that's what I'm present-
Okay. Is that, is that your phone? Go ahead.
Uh, I was just saying, this, this option has been the one that we've used in the past and, um, they did move the deadline when it is due. And as you remember, last year, we bypassed the deadline before we got it submitted. Uh, so I'm just presenting this to go ahead and get it, uh, presented to the state, but it is actually not due until August. But if the board wishes to move that to action, that is fine. If not, it can wait till the next meeting.
Pam, can you go ahead and put that on action for the next meeting?
She said yes. She just forgot to unmute her microphone.
Okay. South Data Services Network and Monitoring Agreements.
Okay, this is just where we're renewing our contract with them. It's the same as last year. Um, I'll be honest, I don't know where we would be without them, honestly, with the rapport that we've already established with the relationships with the network admins, the media coordinators and even maintenance. Um, just when they're monitoring our network, um, nights, weekends, you know, they're emailing me, they're calling me, they're calling Ricky, they're calling Richie, you know, th- this one's down, um, they, they watch it and, um, it's a great rapport, a great relationship, great services. Um, and I don't know if everyone's aware, you know, they have the portal that our, um, media coordinators, our network admins, um, submit calls and work on them, um, throughout the school system.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Uh, this is, this is Fred. I, I have been here the whole time, so now I get to say something.
Okay.
I, I need to comment on this contract.
Okay.
The board, the board is not required by law to bid this because it's really a professional service. The board can solicit alternatives because of the amount. You've got two documents here, two contracts. Uh, I do want to revise some of the terms of this contract. Uh, number one, the entity is wrong. It should not be Stokes County Schools. It should be Stokes County Board of Education. Uh, the amount of the second contract is 70, if my math is correct, it's over $70,000, which under your policy does throw you into the competitive requirement. So, and I'll leave this to your IT experts. If there are others that can provide the service, we need to consider whether or not there is any, uh, practicality in, in soliciting, uh, other alternatives. My guess is, is probably not, because you're, I, I don't know if there's anyone else who can pro- provide in this area the same services that South Data provides. Uh, but I do want to amend the contract. I want some additional indemnification provisions there. Uh, and also it does not have the required sex offender provision, uh, in the contract. So, uh, it, it does not, if it doesn't take a- So uh it it does not, if it doesn't take effect until July, I don't think there's any need for it to be approved today unless unless the administration feels otherwise. But I do wish to have the opportunity to revise the terms of the contract.
Okay. Uh with with board consensus, we all want to put it off until Fred has had the has had a chance to rectify the discrepancies in the contract and we'll bring you back to discussion for the next event. And Ms. Barker, could you be prepared to say whether it is sole bid, sole award on professional basis or do you want to send it out for fit?
I will research that, sir.
Is that fine with the board just having it until Fred can get it cleaned up?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it's fine.
I will say that it will be tough finding someone that will know our infrastructure and work um the way they have with us.
The worry is just we we just need you, we need that uh media coordinator supervision or suggestion and recommendation.
We also need Fred to to do more legal work on it like he just mentioned. He was the one that called.
Yeah, so. So Fred, once you get all that legal work done, can you get with uh me and I'll have Pam put it on the agenda accordingly?
Correct.
Okay. Nutritional bid extensions and for produce and milk.
Yes, board, I you have in your packet a couple of things that were supposed to be up for a complete new bid this year and DPI has given us permission to uh extend those for a year and bid them out next year. With that being, I just need uh y'all's both that that can be done. And Mr. Rogers, I want to need your signature on both the letters that I also had in the bid. Also rollover, our grocery order is up for rollover and that's US Foods and that's the second of a five year, so I added that also. You have any questions?
Is is this something we have to vote on or act upon or?
Yes.
Decide? Okay.
Yes, I uh all three of these will need to be voted on, but it can wait till the next meeting.
Okay, well, since it's on discussion now and that one's pending, uh Ms. Knight, do you have any objection to that?
No, I'm fine with the recommendation and voting on it next meeting time.
Ms. Messick?
Um I'm I'm fine with it. I I don't mind uh voting on it and getting it out of the way this meeting and just going ahead and voting on it since they're in a co-op and all the other co-ops have um, you know, have recommended this too and there's probably nobody else out there that, you know, they can roll over with. I just won't, I could just vote for it today.
Okay, let me let me see what Ms. Datter has to say.
Well, we're talking about D and E right now?
Yes, I think yes, we are. And that actually, D is um, E is part of the co-op, C is um individual. We bid out our produce and milk separate from the co-op.
How does this? So this is just for next school year, so we're not talking.
And I've already contacted them and they have sent back the letter with their signature saying they agreed to the extension.
What if what if we have to continue like we are right now with um feeding program? What if we should be in this kind of situation next year? Um we we are they providing um?
Yes, we're using. We're using uh every Monday, Foster Cavernous is coming and bringing produce. Our milk company is coming at least once a week as we're still, you know, sending out milk and US Foods, of course, is is delivering on Tuesdays. Sadly, what they're delivering is getting less and less because they're not taking in right now any new deliveries into the warehouse, which is why we've had to start going to some of our um companies and having them shipped directly to us.
Okay, but we would still be dealing with these if if this should continue?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I'm fine with moving it to action, Mr. Rogers, if that's what you would prefer did or waiting till next time too, either one.
It doesn't matter to me, but at this time, the board will entertain a motion to move to action if so requested.
I make a motion to move it to action.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, I'll second that.
All those in favor, second by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so move Pam, if you would, make that action item C.
Thank y'all.
Just nod your head, Pam. Okay, thank you.
I said thank you, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, but I can't see you, I'm driving, hold on. All right, so uh federal fund budget amendment, I have a feeling this has been brought on.
Yes, are you correct? It's your budget amendment number four and basically this is where our schools have just done code transfers with their Title I funds as a result um of what's happened with the COVID nineteen. They had a lot of substitute calls, a lot of tutoring, so we've allowed them to rearrange it. So basically, all this is is code transfers and it definitely will help the schools.
Any questions, Ms. Knight?
No, sir.
Ms. uh Messick?
Uh no, I have no questions on this.
Ms. Datter?
I will do whatever Lynette says we need to do with this. I'm good with it.
All right. All right, and the expediency of time, since we have a limited action, uh at this time, the board will entertain a motion to move to action if so requested.
I make a motion to move this to action, the budget amendment four.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. uh Messick in favor, second by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed? So move action item D. All right, now for the fun one, West Stokes track bid. And that depressing letter Mr. Goins sprang on us this weekend. Thank you a lot for ruining my weekend, Ricky. Appreciate it.
Yes, board members, I didn't try to ruin your weekend. I just thought I'd give you time to let it soak in. Uh but I do apologize not getting this in the board packet. We didn't open the bid in time for that, so I I emailed that out to everyone. Uh this is more than we had budgeted once we got the engineer involved for the track is cracked. What this basically consists of, the base bid is to just completely tear up the track and the sub-bake, put down new sub-bake a- asphalt and uh rubber surfacing, uh striping it, uh adding extra drainage around, uh would be adding three catch basins uh to help the drainage of the track and also re-sloping the uh redefining the the swales to the existing drains. Uh the alternate number one would be to go ahead and replace the uh log jump, triple jump runway and take off the boards per plan. The alternate would be replace the pole vault, a runway, concrete landing and pulpit uh per the plan. We just felt like if we were gonna tear the track up, then it'd be best to go ahead and do everything inside the track while they were working on it. Uh there with uh and also in the base bid was to put a concrete curb. It wouldn't be like a curb and gutter on a sidewalk, but it'd be a concrete curb uh in the grass to protect the to protect the edges of the track. Uh alternate number three would actually be a deduct, so we could take that off of that price if we didn't do the concrete curb. But in talking with the engineer and I agree that we should leave that in, just it it gives longevity to the track. The would be requesting five hundred thousand uh for that as wants to have some contingency. And also one of the um grading contractors brought it to my attention late Friday at Friday evening uh after we'd already had the pre-bid, that some of the existing pipe that's underneath the track was metal corrugated and was rusted and he felt like that needed to be replaced. That was not in the bid. So if we're gonna if we're gonna replace that pipe, now would be the time to do that is uh during this project. We just felt like it'd be better to bid it out the way the plans were drawn and then negotiate with the uh low bidder on doing that because he'd already had his equipment there versus having to have the engineer to redo the plans and hold another pre-bid. Uh the the low bidder uh on this project uh was Central Builders. The engineer felt like he would do a good job. He's done this type work with them in the past. Uh but to do this project, uh we would look at somewhere around five hundred thousand dollars. Uh I talked with Lynette, uh we have had some savings on some projects. If we do this, it's only gonna leave us around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in fund balance uh in the capital budget. Uh we haven't uh bid out the uh lights for uh not Olive yet. That would give us an extra a hundred and fourteen thousand if an emergency were to come up and not do that project. But um that's a lot of money. If the board asked me today, if I if I had five hundred thousand dollars, how would I spend it at West Stokes? Unfortunately, would not ruin the track. Uh I would put the chillers in before I put the track down. That's just my personal opinion. I'll entertain any questions.
All right, Ms. Knight?
Ricky, how many years now has this current track lasted? And then what um is different going forward about the products and materials? Are we gonna see a longer life potentially out of this or?
Well, this track was put down when the school was built, so it's twenty years old. And I think they haven't uh ran any track meets in the last three years. The products we're using going forward, uh I don't know that the asphalt is gonna last as long as it does now. I was told that by one of the vendors last year, that the new asphalt would only last ten, maybe twelve uh years and where the old would last eighteen to twenty. Um. Any other questions?
No, sir. Personally, I don't know, it's just a lot for me to, you know, I don't wanna react too quickly with this. I would like more time to uh review the materials and think on this, but um of course, whatever the majority of the board likes. Thank you.
Ms. Messick?
Well, um I sure am um astounded at the price because um but but when you bid something and you don't have a good look at it because you just have to um because of the way our bidding system is is set, um once you get in there and find out all the problems, of course, a lot of times that mounts up was the price. Uh the thing I feel bad about for West Stokes, uh one of our, you know, large high schools and of course North Stokes and South Stokes, uh is that they haven't been able to have a track meet in three years and um they were not even, you know, and they use this all the time out there and Cheston Grove doesn't even have a track that they can have track meets on or to even um have their um needs met. So I feel like that West Stokes has got to have the track, but then there's the chillers too. So with a twenty year old building, I guess things started to go wrong all all at one time.
Yes, Ms. Messick.
I feel like Ricky, with the bid, it says that the Central Builders, that their bid was um three hundred ninety-six thousand eight hundred dollars.
That's correct. That includes the two alternates. That's alternate one and also alternate two, to redo everything uh inside the track while they're there.
Well, where does the five hundred thousand come from?
Well, that would cover any contingencies and also replace the uh pipe uh that's rusted, existing drains that's not covered in the base bid.
Right, that you just mentioned.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, I see that. Well, um is this imperative that we vote on it today?
It would help to if you're gonna do the project to to get it started as soon as possible, uh to hopefully have it done before school comes back. That was our goal.
Plus, it will disrupt foot, it could potentially disrupt football, which is a huge money maker for West Stokes.
Right.
That's true. Mr. Spanier had already uh, he and I had already talked and if we were gonna move forward with this project, if we'd have had a traditional graduation, he was gonna postpone his traditional graduation on the football field to can get this project started early so we could have it finished completed in the fall.
Well, um as we all know, in high schools, the football program is the moneymaker for all the all high schools. They bring in all the um the majority of the money that helps run the school. So um, you know, thank you for all that you have, uh all the work you've done in getting all these bids and all the time you spent on it and um um I'm finished asking questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Datter?
Ricky, um have we discussed some sort of just patching option with the contractor to get it in competition shape? And if so, what would that cost be?
No, we have not. Uh we looked at going in and just repairing the track, uh but from past experience, I felt like if we'd done any type of patching, say, you know, put just go in and and take the rubber up, put new rubber on it, there would not be any kind of warranty whatsoever.
I agree and I know I can understand that, but a lot lots changed since we talked about this last time, not um um, you know, what school's gonna look like plus the huge cost difference in this. Um so I'm just wondering if we could figure out, I mean, I thought when we talked about this last year, a patch job would cost somewhere in the neighborhood of ninety thousand, something like that. And I'm wondering if that could just get it to competition shape for a year or two um because we do need that track for West and for Cheston both. And um then I I do not want to take away from that Mount Olive lighting project because uh Ms. Miller was right on that, that, you know, you get some kids in there that could be unruly and damage the light and that would be a safety issue. And then um but if we did do the patch job, then I would still want West to be when we do have money in the future, I would still want them to be able to complete their project before any of the other high schools because it being the largest one and used for more than um just school events. Um and then I'm wondering if we could if we could save the money with the patching job, if we could um take some of that money and do another project at West that we were seriously considering last time and that would be the gym lighting because um with their success, very successful season this past year, um having new lights in there would make that gym just um very attractive and um again, it's used for so much more than just sporting events in there, so. Patch job consideration while keeping West at the top of the list for the overall um maintenance when we do have. um, maintenance when we do have money. And then considering the lighting project, which is some change compared to the track project. Even if we just could do the main gym would be great.
I could look into what, uh, uh, when we say patch job, what are we considering? Just the rubberized track or if you try to put the, the, the storm grates in? I'm afraid they're gonna damage the track getting the equipment across. Uh, and off the rails along the edge to, to, to the existing grates. Uh, what would be the definition of a patch job?
Well, whatever it takes to get it to be able to, to compete there. I mean, who says, who's the one, who's saying we can't compete there? Is that, um, High School Athletic Association? Is that, um, a safety inspection, a, a local level thing? Who says that? I don't know.
I can't answer that question. I don't know who made that call.
I believe Mr. Spanier made that call because there's so many sections of the rubber that is separated from the asphalt that it is a extreme trip hazard to, to severely understated, it's a trip hazard. So, and any patch job is going right back on that same asphalt that the first rubber did not adhere to. But it's a, it's a drainage issue causing the, the water to separate.
Correct. If you don't correct the drainage issue, anything you put on it is, any other rubberized track is just gonna separate.
So is that all, Ms. Tatter? Or did you ask one more question? Okay. All right, here, here's mine then. Uh, Cheston Grove doesn't have a track, like Ms. Masick said. West Stokes doesn't have a functional track. And South Stokes just got bounced from the list for their track that's starting to come apart. So we need to have one good track that can at least be shared until we can go back and get another one. Now, uh, in respect to you, Ms. Tatter, I'm, I'm personally not for spending ninety thousand dollars to put on the track that I'm gonna tear up in three years and spend five or six hundred thousand dollars more. I think it's time to just bite the bullet, get one track functional, and then potentially we may have three schools use it. Right now, South is still functional. It's not gonna be functional for, for the years to come. So it's gonna be kinda like right in line, wouldn't you say, Mr. Goins?
Yes.
As far as tracks. So, I mean, my personal input is, yeah, it's time to bite the bullet. Takes one track and that's probably gonna be, have to service three schools. Go service two now and probably service three within the next two years. Cause I don't, you know, until we fully recover, I can't see six hundred thousand dollars going into a track elsewhere. Now, I feel like we can get the funding on the chiller in this budget because it is a necessity. So I'm, you know, I'm gonna be voting all for putting the track in. But if we're gonna do this, we need to do it now because it will affect football and potentially a late August graduation if we don't get this thing taken care of. So with that being said, if y'all wanna move it to action, I'll entertain a motion.
Mike, I have a question, Mike.
Okay.
So you're okay with spending down the fund balance to get it done? I was just concerned going forward, you know, if our budget is trimmed and then we're trying to find money to cover some of the necessity items for this year. Would it be wise to, you know, wait and talk to the commissioners, give it a month and then come back? Or a few weeks or whatever, you know, into May and move forward on this project then?
Well, the, the first thing you're gonna look at, that's why you, yeah, the first thing you're gonna say, well, you've got this much in the budget, so we'll withhold this much from the budget.
One thing real quickly, Ms. Moore, were you saying to take the existing funds out of capital fund, fund balance or out of our general fund, fund balance?
No, sir. This has nothing to do with your current expense. This is all capital.
All right, so I think that's a clarification there, Ms. Knight. We're not talking about our general fund balance. This was money designated for capital projects.
Did that, did that, did any of that money, is it because of the, um, roof? Underestimation? You know, I thought we set aside a hundred grand for, um, emergencies or things like this.
Ms. Tatter, it was a combination of some savings on the London roof, uh, the Mount Olive skylights. Uh, it's just a, a other project that we've saved funding on.
And that South Stokes roof, Ricky, was a biggie too.
Yeah.
And maybe a little bit still off the door locks? Or was that last year's?
So in essence, we've, we've saved money on projects, but now this one has gone over, so.
Correct.
It's gonna, it's gonna about wash out in the end.
That's one way to look at it.
Yeah, right, Ms. Moore?
That's true. With the understanding, we're basing, you might have right at a hundred and twenty thousand left if you approve this, with the understanding of the big projects that's yet to be completed would be the Mount Olive lighting, that it comes within the budget of a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And that the hundred thousand for, uh, King Elementary, um, that that stays within that range as well. So that would just be two outstanding projects that could come up with a lot of money. But with, if they come within budget, that would still leave you right at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
You still comfortable with those projects, Ricky? Those two?
Yes, I do. At Mount Olive, if it were to come over, we could just cut back the number of classrooms that we do and cannibalize some of the fixtures to repair those fixtures, uh, until we can appropriate the money to complete it.
Okay. So do I have a motion to move it to action or do we let it die on the vine?
I make a motion to move it to action, uh, because, because we have two schools for three years that have not been able to have a track meet at the school. And because of the safety issues.
Okay. Do I have a second?
It's getting in a second, lets me, I, I've got another question though first, before we.
Well, go ahead. Second, I'll, I'll throw it back to discussion before we vote then.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say if I'm a saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
There's one. All right. The moves, that will be action item E with discussion, with further clarification. All right, uh, SB recommendation for educator evaluation.
Okay, uh, Mr. Rogers in board, this is Melissa Jessup speaking. Last Thursday, the State Board of Education, uh, acted on a recommendation from the Department of Public Instruction on teacher evaluations. That action said that teachers, uh, who all required observations had been done before the school closures, that they could continue with the final evaluation on the summative. But if that had not happened, then they could abandon the summary evaluation as well as doing any online observations, uh, because the instrument is not validated for that process. Then, uh, this weekend, the House and the Senate acted on the COVID-nineteen, uh, relief package. The language in that is just a little bit different. Uh, it says that based on observations completed this year prior to the school closure period, or if there are other artifacts and evidences from the nineteen-twenty school year, uh, that they could continue. So, uh, it did also say that schools would not be required to complete any observations they had not completed prior to the school closure. So in essence, it looks like that for this year, schools will be able to, uh, not continue on with the evaluation process, pick it up again in next school year. But until the governor signs off on that package, uh, we don't have the particulars on that. But did want to give you a heads up on what that is looking like for this year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Knight, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Ms. Masick?
Um, no, um, I just wanna make a comment. I think the state probably made the right decision because, um, I don't think that it'd be fair to continue with the observations, uh, when, when it's all online right now. So I agree with the state on this.
Ms. Tatter?
I'm in agreement with it, as is.
Okay. Me too. Thank you, Ms. Jessup. All right, moving on. Item I, high school graduation.
Uh, board, I sent you the, uh, survey results that, from our senior class. Right at seventy-six percent of them, uh, wanted to have the opportunity to, to delay grad, graduation. And let me clarify this. If we are allowed to have graduation at the normally scheduled time, that first week in June, that is still our goal. Until we are told we can't, um, our schools are still putting that forward. That that is our number one option as long as we can. Uh, but if we are told that we can't, then instead of having reduced numbers, social distancing and all of that, our student body, uh, the, the class of twenty-twenty wanted to look at August first graduation. So that is our high school principals, uh, Mr. Rose, myself, we've been meeting, uh, regularly about this. That is our recommendation to do as a first option. Another thing that we would like to do is we would also like to conduct a video graduation. And we discussed this with principals and administrators. And we talked about, you know, if you're wondering, well, why wasn't that an option just to say video with these other options? It's because if all of our, if the student body would have voted seventy-five, seventy-six percent to say all we want is a video graduation, then we would have done that. But with the option of video or delayed, they chose delayed. What our principals would like to do now is to go back and get the option, give, do a video and the delay. And the reason for that is, one, we need to bring in the students anyway to do their cap and gown pictures. So they're already gonna be coming back to the building. So when they come back in for their cap and gown pictures, to set up a little stage, have the students bring in parents, they could bring up to five people. Uh, they would come in and the students would walk across the stage. We would video them doing that. And then, um, you know, the schools have some other little optional things that they wanted to do with them as well. But the main thing was video them walking across the stage with calling their name, editing all of that together. And then if we were required to do a delayed graduation, they could still have one on the appointed time, you know, with their family and friends, but still do the one in August if we're allowed to do the one in August. Um, so we wanna do that in addition to the delayed one as well. And this covers kids that, you know, maybe move away or have joined the military or have a job at that point and are not available on the date of graduation. This would allow us to recognize more, if not all of our senior class, than just one option.
Okay, so what do you need from us?
Well, we really don't need anything from you. I just wanted to throw that out. If you had concerns about that or anything, I wanted to give you that opportunity to provide feedback. But it's not, it's a day-to-day operation. It's not really a vote, but I certainly wanted you to be aware of it and to have a chance to ask any questions if you did, or to bring up any concerns if you have any. We have not announced that to students yet in math, shared the survey results. But we would follow up today with more of a graduation, based on their survey results.
Okay. All right, Ms. Knight, do you have any questions?
Um, yes, I feel that there are some concerns that if moving forward with the virtual, which is not what the students voted for, then you'll have lesser number of students possibly participate come August first. You know, it's an issue right now. It's important right now, but you do the virtuals and, you know, and I know it's all a choice, but I guess that's the, the, the possible downside.
Well, and our principals agree with you. And that's why they wanted to do the virtual one because they were, they believe that students right now on May fourth may say, yes, I'll come back in August. But if, you know, they say, you know, the longer you're away from school, the more that moves out of your mind. And what, again, whether you come up with a vacation plan then, or somebody's gone to the military or somebody moves away or whatever, or just, you know, they say, you know what? I've already been out of school now for three months. I'm not going back now. That their fear is that the graduating, the graduation would only have, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy percent of the students there. And so the video would help to celebrate all of them. And then definitely the ones that want to come back, we are committed to doing that. But their fear was not as many people would wanna come back anyway. So this would be a way to honor them as well.
I'm sorry, say the last part about not as many people would want to come back anyway?
Yes, ma'am. There, the principal's fear is that once, once students get away from school and they kinda lose that mindset, you know, some of them are already preparing, working in other jobs or preparing to go to college. That then it's, you know, three months from now, they may not want to come back. But so if we have the video now and the one then, there's a better chance of honoring more of the class than just offering one option.
And what was your thinking behind the August first? Just, um, governor orders, uh, potentially phases, uh, dragging out until that date?
Yes, ma'am. Just thinking that it would drag out for a while. And then if you get into July, that is a, if people are allowed, a big vacation month with Fourth of July week and all of that. So this was just, we didn't wanna get too close to school starting and when people would go to college and move-in dates and for that, we just kinda thought August first would be a good date that's before colleges move in, after the traditional, um, vacation period and give people something to look at planning for. Again, as we stated on the survey, that would be up to federal restrictions at that time as well. And, you know, we may have to look at something else at that point. But again, knowing the further away we get from it, the less participation we would have.
Okay, well, thank you for keeping us in the loop and a clear line of communication with students. Uh, we all appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ms. Masick?
Uh, Dr. Rice, I wanted to ask on the virtual, uh, video graduation, would that just be the five people plus the graduate and no other people in the audience?
Yes, ma'am. Kinda what they have envisioned is to appoint people a certain time to come to the school. And then we, they would walk in, like to the gym, where they would walk into an area, get their, you know, they'd have their cap and gown, get a picture made, walk across the stage, then exit out of that area and go to another area. Um, and so there would only be so many people in the gym at a time. So that would keep from violating the more than ten people in one location, realizing that we have to have a videographer, you know, the principal. And so we're trying to keep that number at ten or under.
And so the school board wouldn't be participating in this?
Correct. Because this will take, you know, several days at West Stokes High School. And we wouldn't ask you to come sit in there for a week, um, for that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, if that's on August the first, how will the other high schools be handled?
I'm sorry, on August first, uh, that would be, you know, at the school level. What I was, I thought you were asking about was the video part of it.
Yeah, I am, I'm asking that. But, uh, I am asking that about the virtual. Well, uh, let's go back to that. Um, will that be handled simultaneously with North and South doing the same thing on, with the virtual on the same day in Meadowbrook? Or how's that gonna be handled with all the different high schools?
That would be up to the schools and the videographers to schedule that.
Okay.
They, they would work out their own schedules.
But in. But it all maybe take place on um on a day that in June, the regular graduation day?
No, ma'am, this would be taking place during the month of May, so that production companies could, you know, edit the footage around, and so have it ready for that early June broadcast.
Oh, I see, so uh okay, and you've not given this information out to anybody yet, have you?
No, ma'am, I have not.
Okay. Now, going back to August the first, would uh the school board be involved in that day?
We really haven't got into looking at the timing of that so much. Again, we're knowing that some people would have jobs and and things like that, we looked at it at Saturday, August first. We've not really looked if we wanted to, you know, do a nine in the morning, twelve, three, five, you know, scheduling them out that time, or just say, schedule your own and board members can choose one to go to. Uh we haven't got into the nuts and bolts of what time that would be uh for that in August first yet.
Okay, nine, twelve, three, five, oh.
I'm saying we have not set times yet. That that's an option, or if the board, you know, is okay with just saying, you know what, we realize this is a unique year, pick a time in August when it's convenient, because August, you gotta worry about the heat of the day, um and so, you know, it might not be the type thing that somebody wants to have a one o'clock on August Saturday afternoon. Um so, you know, it may be the type thing that some of them are during the same time periods.
And what about uh early college, when are they gonna graduate?
That same time.
Even on August first, if you chose that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, go going back, you've not set a date eh for the May, have you?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for all the support, ma'am, thank you.
You're you're certainly welcome.
Ms. Tetter?
Yes, again, thank you for all the options um and doing the survey, and I agree that a combination is the best, um but but going ahead and moving forward with the virtual planning right now, getting these um videographers lined up and doing all that, um because who knows if we can even have the August one, these phases, once we start them, could drag out for weeks, so um go ahead with the virtual option, because that might be all. But hopefully we can do some kind of in-person in August, but go go ahead with number one as soon as possible.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and I agree with uh what Ms. Tetter said, there's gonna be a lot that, oh yeah, I'm gonna be there August first, that won't, and we don't want that memory lost forever. So at least we've got some backup to it, so. Thanks for your effort, just let us know, keep us in the loop on uh how this is, uh how the planning is coming and anything we can assist with. Okay, moving on to COVID nineteen update, item J.
Ms. Tetter, are there specific questions that you have? Uh right now, we are still doing the same thing we have been doing. Again, our our feeding program is serving over twenty thousand meals a week, uh our educators are continuing their instruction. Uh I just, while we've been in this meeting, I got a email from one of his prin, one of my principals that have said, you know, seventy-six percent of his student body are regularly engaged, and another twenty percent are semi-regularly engaged, and only has about five percent that's checked out, if you will. Um he said ironically, the ones that have checked out don't seem to have internet issues, it's just been more of a choice, but that's kinda mirroring what we have going on in our district, that most of our kids are staying engaged uh in learning, and then our teachers are certainly working extremely hard right now in providing this instruction, but are there specific questions you have?
I'm sorry, I didn't unmute. Um nutrition was one of the main concerns on this, so did you say twenty thousand a week?
Yes, ma'am, a little over twenty thousand per week are being fed, twenty thousand meals.
Okay, um so with a total of how many approximately to date?
Uh little over a hundred and forty thousand, I believe.
Okay, um that's wonderful. How, what are we planning on doing into the summer months, if anything, with with that?
We received permission um last week to continue this into June thirtieth in this current format. One thing, again, we are a little concerned about is staffing, uh because our our cafeteria workers will tell you very quickly that this is much different work than what they're normally doing. Um making a chicken pie, flipping it, and getting it through the line is one thing, but to prepackage everything, put it all in one bag, get it out, is is a totally different scenario, and they're pretty tired right now. And so some of them, they are, they are not going to continue into the summer, but Ms. Dillon is is going through a survey with them now to find out how many are willing to keep going, and we have discussed the possibility if we have some staff members that wanna do it, but some don't, to open this up to possibly our ten-month employees to see if any of them, some of them are normally teaching summer school, but this may give them another summer employment option if they wanted to. Uh if we still didn't have enough, we could post vacancies to hire people to come in and work during the summer. So we've discussed all of that, but our intention right now is to keep it going in the current format until June thirtieth, and then if it is extended, then we would look at extending it as well. But we are already looking at staffing options to make that a a real possibility.
Okay. Um can you tell me, uh Ms. Dillon, or Dr. Rice, either one, what what does a typical meal look like in this fashion?
We um get, we follow our summer program uh meal pattern guideline, so that means at breakfast, there are three options, there's an entree, a fruit, and then there is milk, and then at lunch, there's five, so it's basically five parts of the my plate, so you have a fruit, a vegetable, an entree, a grain, and milk. And so they are sending out eight pieces every day, you know, 'cause they send out breakfast and lunch at the same time.
Specifically, we've been giving out like chicken sandwiches, salmon cheese sandwiches, uh cheese sticks with marinara sauce, we've been doing um, Ms. Dillon, have we done the barbecue yet?
Yes, we've done barbecue every week. This week, we're actually gonna do, 'cause they're cleaning out freezers, our Asian chicken, so they're gonna be doing like a rice bowl with whatever Asian chicken they have in their freezers, we're doing that. We have um, I'm trying to think of just anything else hot, of course, we've done pizza, our cheesy bread, uh garlic breadstick that they like so much.
And breakfast can be cereal, super donuts, um cinnamon rolls, it it might be a a variety of different things. We've done carrot sticks and celery sticks, apple slices, uh and then sometimes we put in goose as the fruits, so it's a variety of food, uh every day may be a little different, and in some kitchens, it may be a little different, based on food availability at the time. We've done, you know, fruit cocktail uh in in cups, um salads, we've had those some days, uh so it's it's been a wide variety of food, it it's been a good, good variety.
Thank you. We um, matter of fact, today, actually, this morning, we had a delivery come in from Guinea turkey, and we have about four thousand pounds of turkey, so I'm sure turkey will be added to the menu a little bit more, especially going through June with salad, then we have some turkey sticks where you can just put the stick in the bag with the cheese for chef salad.
That's all wonderful news, um those options sound really good for the way y'all are having to do that, so ju- just great work on that. Um just, and then a follow-up question, is are all of these meals, are are all of these um for just the free reduced population, or, and then they they get it without charge, or are there some people that are coming in who are able to pay some and getting it?
When they started this, our person that's over our group, Dr. Harvey, said that with this, the governor had allowed and USDA for there to be no restrictions, so that means there's no questions asked, so they don't ask them if they're free and reduced, they don't ask them if they take ten bags, you know, while they're taking ten bags, uh we're hoping they're taking it to their neighborhood, but they just wanna get the food out there as quickly as possible, and as easy on us. So all we're doing is sitting there checking numbers.
Ms. Tetter, anything else?
Okay, um all that's great, really good to hear, thank you so much.
Uh may I ask a question of Ms. Dillon, this is uh, you said five components, fruit, entree, milk, grain, and what was the other one?
Um, we got milk, I have to count it on my fingers, got milk, uh fruit and vegetable, entree and a grain.
Okay, thank you, 'cause a lot of times I have people ask me, and uh I wanted to be able to report it correctly. Thank you, Ms. Dillon, and for all your hard work, and for all the cafeteria workers, I know that they're exhausted as you are, but I applaud you for all the effort that you guys have made to give out over a hundred and forty thousand meals to date, it's incredible. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
Ms. Knight, you have anything?
Um, nothing additional, sorry, yeah, I'm very proud of the nutrition department and all their hard work, and everyone just stepping in and um, you know, working extra, and we really appreciate it and the service they're doing for the community, thank y'all, Ms. Dillon.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, moving to action, uh Capitol LA budget amendment, we'll ca tackle these in two two phases, uh.
Hang on, hang on one second, Mike, I have a couple more other than nutrition for COVID um update. Um the grading on that, um when we have to do narrative grading for um elementary there, and that's that's how we're doing it, right? Um like um.
Yes, hey, Anna, yes, I'm working on a format right now um for us to uh give feedback to our parents and our um and their families or guardians. Uh I am meeting with the principals next Monday to go over it with them, I've already shared it with Doug and Dr. Rice to get some feedback, um then I might share it with the principals and get feedback, um and once I've done that with both, with everybody, um then we will send it out to the teachers so they can go ahead and um start looking and feeding and to fill out and to share back with parents on, like they would at the end of the school year.
Okay, um one of those, I've seen a a matrix or um rubric, rather, on this, and one of the things is uh no engagement, the teacher has been unable to make contact with the student or family, please contact the school.
So we we have a progress report going home today, um which is not really a progress report, that's more, it's more of an engagement participation report, um that is is different than the um feedback that goes home at the end of the school year. But yes, that we do have a progress report, just getting in touch with families, just to to encourage um that continued feedback.
Sure, okay, so I know we're working with um, how di- how different is online versus the paper packets that the students could get?
So the teachers are trying their best to mimic it as much as possible to their classroom instruction, and I'll let Doug speak for middle and high, but they're trying their best, um it doesn't look exactly the same. Um I do know that some of the schools um I have done a piece where um they are putting everything on flash drives and sending home the Chromebooks, um and so that it goes, they see the same thing um as much as possible. The biggest thing they miss out on is if there's a live lesson, they don't miss out on many of the materials, but if the teacher does anything that is like a live type of lesson, that's the biggest thing that they miss out on. Um but then with that, but with that said, a lot of kids who do have access to internet and things like that, miss out on the live lesson as well, um just because of time. Um we've got to be really flexible um as much as possible, um but, you know, um parents and families, obviously, you know, can't always be available at the same time, and teachers can't always be available at the same time a family can be. Um the schedules have just, we've had to be very gracious and and flexible with our times.
And I will say.
It's not possible, I'm sorry, Doug.
That's all right. I will say that it's going to cover the, you know, the same objectives as we're trying to get through the curriculum for this year, it's just gonna be, you know, different methods as far as what you would receive online and what you receive from a paper packet.
Can students opt to do both?
We would encourage the online option, as that is much more interactive, and, I mean, we do have instructional options, um you know, through Google Meet with that as well, so I would encourage the more interactive option, where they're getting more time with the teacher rather than just the paper.
Okay, um what does joined online classes mean? Is that a live thing, or is that just going on and logging in onto one of these apps to do your assignments? Because, and I'm I'm asking this because on the behalf of working parents who can't be there during a teacher's office hours, the student is doing their online work, but they do not know to go to an online.
So it covers.
Virtual real-time meeting.
It covers the gamut of all of it. If you're looking at the rubric for the elementary engagement one, it's talking about all things online or and or remote, um it's not saying your things being held against anyone if they're not participating in something.
Okay, all right, I'll follow up with you on that later, Anna, thank you so much.
Okay, yes, if it's a specific situation with a specific um um student or situation, yes, you can contact me, but I would also contact the teacher and or principal, absolutely.
Okay.
Because the message has definitely been to be as very gracious as we possibly can, because we understand that parents are doing the best they can as well on their end.
Right, right, thank you.
You done, Ms. Tetter?
Um Chromebooks, what are we planning to do with Chromebooks at the end of the calendar year in June?
Hold on, hold on, Katie, what we're gonna do, I'm gonna move to action and then come back in, 'cause I'm gonna have to duck out, uh and I'll just turn the meeting over to you, and you can come back and touch touch this after action before we go closed. Uh yeah, all right, uh Capitol Outlay Budget, uh do I have a motion to adopt the Capitol Outlay as we amended it earlier, removing South Stokes School Track and reprioritizing and renaming the priority list?
I make a motion, Mike.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Knight.
And the re-prioritized, yes, and the re-prioritized.
It's al, yeah, it's already in action, we're voting to approve the budget as redone.
Yes, sir, well, I'll make a motion then.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
All right, all those in favor of that signify by saying a. Signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, so motion. Capitol LA has been voted on. For an expense budget, this is where we have a couple of variances. So at this point, we'll entertain a motion, but you'll need to spell out what the motion is as far as what got cut and what got kept. Okay, we had several people out there. My recommendation, as we stated before, was, let me flip back to it real quick. Now somebody wants to chime in.
I believe the current recommendation was a part-time person for both teams and data manager, cutting that 47, 571 down about in half, or maybe about 25,000 on the budget. And then the keeping the maintenance position and keeping the salary adjustment for classified employees. And the firefighter, first responder program would be a separate item. The county would choose to fund or not. That was, I believe, what we had mentioned. And then Ms. Tetter may have had some additional variances or concerns.
Yeah, so I'll need a motion to state that. I mean, basically, you just did. We'll have to vote on that. We'll have that motion, we'll have a second, we'll vote. And then if that motion doesn't pass, then we'll go back and modify it accordingly. Correct, Mr. Johnson?
Correct.
Okay. So, Ms. Knight, are you making...
Yeah, I'll make that motion as stated. Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a second on that motion?
I make a second on that motion.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's one.
Aye.
Aye. That's two, and I'll vote three. So that's three, so that completes the current expense budget. Let me flip back to the agenda now. Let's see, that one, and then item C. Yeah, go ahead, item C.
Item A was the approval of the two budgets, A and B under that. Item B would be the full nutrition bit extensions for produce and milk.
Okay. I just wanted to see DNA. All right, perfect. Do I have a motion to approve the school nutrition as presented?
I make a motion to approve the school nutrition as presented.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried?
My...
Oh, yeah, I need you back.
Can, on the current expense, are you all going to put in priority order? How are you, the ones that you've left in on the new request?
No, they're listed in not priority order.
Leave it as non-pri, not priority then?
Non-priority, with the other as the second. And Ms. Tetter, what, did you want to vote against that? I forgot to ask for an aye. Did you want to vote against that budget or not?
Well, I wanted to add to the motion, but with looking at the other positions as being filled by temporary workers, if they're, if we could get some good ones, well-qualified ones.
Okay. We can discuss that if we can't get, after we get back from the deal, if we still have money available, we will. Okay.
Well, I don't want to sell ourselves too short with the county. So I don't know if we could put in a line item for temporary positions on there and explain what that means, saying that we wanted more, knowing that there's positions cut, yet we still have the needs and the unknowns. So we would like the option for the sake of our students to be able to hire well-qualified temporary coaches and guidance counselors.
Okay, then why don't we, why don't we do this? And I'm gonna ask Mr. Johnson if it's okay. Can we just put a line item in, additional, here's our approved budget, here are additional positions if funding allows?
Additional needs if funding allows, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson?
So it's not part of, it's not part of our budget, but it's part of our recommendations.
You can certainly make, yes, you can pass a motion making that in the form of a request.
Okay. So Ms. Tetter, I'm assuming you have just made that request in the form of a motion, correct?
If that can be in there, yes. Make the motion to put in an additional line item request for positions based on student need, hired as temporary employees for the next school year.
Okay, do I have a second?
I think, because we need it on record that those are needs. We can't, I don't want to send it up there and not have it in there for guidance counselors and teacher coaches. And they say, well, why didn't you ask for it then? Just still on the record.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay, pending a second. We will move on. Let's see, we, okay, so back to which would be item C? Dr. Rice?
Federal budget amendment before?
Yeah, but, yes.
Because you combined the two child nutrition ones into one, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so now C would be the federal budget amendment.
All right, all those, do I have a motion to approve the budget, federal budget amendment as presented by Ms. Moore?
So moved.
Second.
Approve, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So carried. West Stokes Track, do I have a motion to approve the expenditures as presented by Mr. Goings for the replacement of the track at West Stokes?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, I'll second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I'm sorry, Mike, I seconded that, but I had it on mute. I'm sorry.
All right, perfect. Seconded by, yeah, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? So moved. That's it for the action. At this point, I'm gonna have to jump off the call. Ms. Tetter, you are now the acting chairman, or chairperson. All right, thank y'all. Y'all have a great day.
You too.
Thank you, be safe.
Board, we have just a few items to share with you. Your next regular board meeting is scheduled for May the 18th. That will be an evening meeting at 6:00 PM. You also, please put on your calendar, if you haven't done so already, the joint session between the Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners is currently scheduled for May the 28th at 3:00 PM at the, in the commissioners' chambers. And then, of course, the, your June 1st meeting and June 15th regular meeting. Those are the items announcements we have, unless you have any questions.
That will do for that, unless anybody else has any questions on those.
Just one, on the May 18th meeting, the regular session will begin at 6:00. This is just a reminder for the board members that we will have a, an appeal hearing at 5:00 PM that day in closed session. But the regular session will begin at 6:00.
5:00 PM?
Yes, ma'am. And if, again, the plan is to have that in the boardroom, if we're allowed to at that time.
Okay, we'll talk more about that in closed then.
May I ask something?
If it's about that, why we're meeting at 5:00, let's wait till we get into closed.
No, I was talking about the, another meeting on May 18th. If it's allowed, are we still gonna have that one retired, retirees reception?
We have that as to be determined. If we are allowed to have that, we would like to recognize our retirees, yes, ma'am. But we're just waiting for more guidance.
But it will be on the same day as our regular meeting?
It has been tentatively scheduled for that day, yes, ma'am. But if that changes, we will notify you immediately.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Then I will take a motion to go into closed.
I make the motion to go into closed session.
I second.
Madam Chairperson, the motion is under General Statutes 143, 318.11, subsections A1, A3, and A6. And I will incorporate those by reference, unless the board would like me to recite the provisions.
I don't see any need for that, unless... You do, Fred?
No, I do not think so.
Okay, well, let's, we are now out of open session. A few minutes to unplug us, and then we'll proceed with closed. And just, let's take a five-minute break if you need to. And let us know when you're back in and you're ready to go, Dr. Rice.
Yes, ma'am. I've got 11:33. Let's just add five minutes to that, and so we'll come back at 11:38.
Dr. Rice, do we, do we call in on the same number, or is there a different number?
We will stay in here, and other people will exit, and we can see that they are gone.
I'm just gonna put myself on mute right now.
I have stopped the recording.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.